Ninth meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bredegham?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Dovin?
President.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen Pinalosa?
Here.
Mayor Protem Tran?
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. May I ask Police Chief of Mayor Alfara to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Klaufenstein to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together as community members, city leaders, city officials. We are especially grateful for our elected officials for their dedication and devotion, and we ask that thou will bless them with wisdom and energy and good health. We're grateful for the opportunity of a new year and the opportunities that come with it. We ask that thou will bless Garden Grove, that will continue to grow and develop and prosper, and that all those who reside or do business in our community do so with support and a feeling of togetherness and support. We ask that thou will bless those who protect and serve our community, that they do so with respect and empathy, and that they too will be protected and are able to return home to their families. Bless those who are less fortunate, let them feel thy spirit and thy love, and we ask that thou, of all these things, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart and pray after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, that takes us on to Presentations. We do have one item listed. Presentation number 1A is a Community Spotlight in recognition of the Garden Grove Unified School District on notable achievements and accomplishments in 2023.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. As we begin the new year, the Garden Grove City Council is honored to shine the community spotlight on Garden Grove's Unified School District for their notable achievements and accomplishments in 2023. With the members of the Garden Grove Unified District Board of Education and the Superintendent Dr. Gabriela Mafi, please come forward. Every year, the Garden Grove Unified School District, its educators, schools, students receive many high-ranking awards recognition from federal, state, and local organizations. Last December, GGUSD earned the high ranking on the 2023 California School Dashboard, the state school performance and accountability system. The California Dashboard displays five color-coded performance levels, with GGUSD ranking green, a high-level ranking in five categories, including English Language Arts, Math, Progress of English Learners, Graduation Rates, and College and Career Readiness. On November 30th of last year, GGUSD was awarded the Golden Bell Award by the California School Board Association for GGUSD's Aspire School of Care System and supports students' mental health and well-being. The award promotes and recognizes excellence in public education and school board governance, and GGUSD's Aspire System of Care has made a transformative impact on mental health needs of students and its three-tiered innovative approach to school-based mental health counseling. For the fourth consecutive year, GGUSD students outperformed county and state standards on the California Balanced Assessment Consortium in English Language Arts and Mathematics. GGUSD is the highest-performing district among comparable large urban school districts in the core group, which includes Fresno, Long Beach, Los Angeles, Oakland, Sacramento, San Francisco, and Santa Ana. Last September, the U.S. Department of Education recognized Anthony Elementary School, Cook Elementary School, and Payne Elementary School as the National Blue Ribbon Schools for 2023. In the category of exemplary high-performing schools, this prestigious honor is based on a school's overall academic performance and was awarded to only 353 schools across the nation, including 33 in California. For the fifth consecutive year, GGUSD was honored with the 2023 Best Communities for Music Education Award, a national distinction presented to districts that demonstrates outstanding achievements in providing music access and education to all students. Awarded to less than 850 districts across the nation, GGUSD is one of only six districts in Orange County and 32 districts across California to receive this national recognition from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. On January 17th of last year, Garden Grove High School teacher Quang Long was one of five teachers across the state to be recognized as the 2022 Outstanding Teachers of America by the Above and Beyond Organization. As part of this recognition, Mr. Long was awarded $20,000 grant from the organization and $5,000, which will go towards the Garden Grove High School. And there's more. Last January, Walton Intermediate School was one of the 60-winning teams and the only intermediate school in California selected to build and launch their proposed experiment in the NASA TechRise Student Challenge. The challenge invites students across the nation to join forces with NASA in its mission to advance space exploration. Also last January, Ethan Allen Elementary School and Cook Elementary School were named the 2023 Distinguished Schools. Approximately 350 elementary schools across the state were selected for this prestigious award, which recognizes outstanding schools for their succeeding exceptional student performance and closing the achievement gap. Additionally, all seven GGUSD high schools earn national and metro area rankings on the prestigious 2023 24 America's Best High Schools list published by the U.S. News and World Report. GGUSD High School ranked in the top 21% nationally, among nearly 18,000 high schools, and in the top 250 schools in the Los Angeles metro area. The ranking reflects measurements on the state's math and reading exams, college readiness, including advanced placement success, understaffed student performance, and graduation rates. These recognitions are outstanding distinctions for GGUSD, and the city could not be more proud of these accomplishments. At this time, the mayor and the city council elect to present the Garden Grove Unified School District Board of Education and the Superintendent Dr. Gabriela Mafi with a certificate of recognition for their hard work and high rankings. Congratulations.
Okay. I'm Terri Rocco, currently president of the school board, along with my colleagues and Dr. Mafi. I think, first of all, thank you to the city of Garden Grove, to all of you for the recognition. I think often, we work so hard, and we keep going, and we keep going, that we don't take time to stop and celebrate. So, thank you for doing that for us and with us, and I know that you play some part of this too, as partners, community partners. Garden Grove is one of the best places to be, and we feel very supported by the city, the PD, and all of our partners in Garden Grove. This is kind of like a win-win for all of us, so thank you so much.
Sure, please go ahead, Cindy.
I just want to say congratulations while Midly is speaking. I just remember, like, all the things that we have done with your students, just think about Ms. Terri Rocco, remember, we went and visited the elder, and then the student, I went to the contest, the cooking contest, and Garden Grove School got first, second, and third, and they won all the prizes. And then we have the 500, the student came to support. It's just amazing. I sit here, and I'm just, like, thinking about all the amazing things that you guys have done, so just want to say congratulations, and I think that you probably have that big smile on your face, just see how amazing your students are.
All righty, thank you. We will go on to oral communications. You guys are welcome to clear out, if you'd like, so you don't get stuck. I do have a handful of cards, so we'll open up oral communications, and I'll start with Teresa Mae Wright.
Good evening, the mayor, Stephen Jones, and all the councilmen, and all the ladies and gentlemen presented here. My name is Teresa Wright. I'm from Little Saigon TV. Little Saigon TV is a station that broadcasts on KDOC 56.10. We've been in the community over 30 years, and we create a lot of community events. As you can know, that we also broadcast the Strawberry Festival for the last 20 years and support the city broadcast, also the news from the city of Garden Grove as well. We do it monthly. We are working toward the Lunar New Year Countdown, which is we choose the Garden M because many reasons. Number one is we're working on the Chan Zee, which is we just congratulate for all the school district that you got tonight, and those Chan Zee is our future, and we recognize it. Therefore, we are looking for a performance that bring the Chan Zee together with other previous generation in non-traditional setting. We've been doing the Lunar New Year Countdown at some Buddhist temple in Santana for the last 17, 18 years, but we do recognize it important to bring the gap of the generation. And therefore, we choosing the program that we bring various performances from Vietnamese-American talents, which is the younger generation. We're looking at, like, the MC, we choosing, like, Kenneth Nguyen. He's have a lot of follower from the Vietnamese podcast. We have Jennifer Jung, which is from Embodi, that do MC. We bring some singers such as rapper mix Miachi come from Florida, because he been known across Chan Zee, and we do DJ Set by DJ Demon Slayer. We have a lot of pop artists, like D1DNA. We have singer Tina Jolay, and we have a lot of comedy act from Embarrassed by Night. As you hear, this is kind of fun for me. We also have a poetry for Jenny Zhang Lei, and we do a lot of, like, modern traditional dance performances by 3:00 AM, and also from Vietcom. So, we mix the tradition with the newer wave, and the program will be in both English and Vietnamese. The reason we doing this, we asking for the program ending at 12:15 midnight. As you know, countdown had to be at by midnight, and Lunar New Year is so important in our community to symbolize a new beginning, just like new goals and new focus for everyone. So, we are here to looking for the councils and the public to approve for us to use Garden M to pass midnight, and this is our first experience with the Chan Zee. We're also hoping this is a way to bring artists to Garden M more in the future, especially to focus on Vietnamese-American. So far, we know in our community, no one have done that, and this is very important for us to try this out first time. So, please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Just a comment, if I may, Ms. Wright, and thank you for coming tonight. We welcome you with open arms. As you know, I've worked with your station before, and we appreciate all the coverage, especially around Lunar New Year and other festivals, which you do very well. That parade, you've covered that. Strawberry Festival, you've mentioned that. And this year, you're providing some coverage for the Flower Street.
That's correct. I forgot to say that this is, we are part of the Flower Street Parade, and I myself, I brought up a new parade for the children, so you will see the children flower wagon parade as well.
Beautiful. We look forward to that, and we welcome back the Flower Street organizers. I mentioned last year that we hope it was a successful first-time event, and it won't be the last, and true to their words, they've made a very successful event last year and coming back this year, so we're welcome your partnership. And it's also the first time that you'll be using our venue, the Garden Amphitheater, so thank you for that, because it is underutilized in my mind, and to open that up to all the communities, mainstream, and every community is welcome to the Lunar New Year event, and the countdown will be a big deal. And we plead to the residents and businesses in that area to afford us some tolerance for that celebration. And once again, thank you for coming to our city and providing the great wonderful coverage. I watch all of your debt programs, and it's on, it's still online, a lot of it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I hope this year, you're gonna have a successful coverage, and thank you for coming in. I wanted to meet you in person, have you meet our council, so get to know everybody. We're very supportive, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Happy New Year, y'all. I will make it short and sweet. Mr. O'Neil, you said you get you a measurement, 180 feet. We need 180 feet of fence for both sides of Gilbert. I don't know what else to say. How soon do you think we could be able to get started on that project?
It's a one-way direct road. I can get to it after the meeting.
That would be excellent.
There's other people involved in the city?
Yes, sir. And then the graffiti that's on Gilbert is unreal, and I've called the city, I don't know how many times, and the graffiti hotlines, it's been there for over 35 days. Huge letters over six feet tall, SF, Street Family. It's a new gang that's in town from Buena Park. So, anyway, whatever you guys think you can do to help clean up the area, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Zaki.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please come forward.
Good evening. How's it going? First off, Happy New Year. So, I'm here, my name is Adam Zaki, I live in Culver City, but I wanted to stop by today to speak about a matter that I felt compelled to talk about. It's in regards to the homicide that occurred on September 10th, 2022, of Julian Martinez. So, I prepared a little speech. So, Julian Martinez was a vibrant individual, loved by many, and he, it was unfortunate that he had to be such a demise at such a young age. So, I just like the, just like the members of the family, victim's family, law enforcement as well as members of the community would like to see the individual or individuals responsible apprehended and brought to justice, make our streets safer. So, I stand with the Martinez family in requesting the city of Garden Grove to grant a monetary reward for information leading to the apprehension of this individual or individuals. The reward will create an incentive for members of the community to come forward and provide leads that can be crucial in bringing this suspect to justice. There's a great likelihood that someone out there does have information that can lead to the apprehension of these individuals responsible. A monetary reward will send a clear message and act as a future deterrent to criminals that think this sort of behavior will be okay in the city of, you know, Garden Grove, so this will, this will provide a clear example that, that such actions will be aggressively pursued by law enforcement and members of the community through a community policing approach. The family of Julian Martinez needs closure to the senseless crime. There is pain that is felt from losing a loved one, however, for the family, this feeling, this pain is amplified, knowing that the person responsible for Julian's death is still out there free on streets. I kindly ask you to please help the Julian family, Garden Grove PD, and citizens of the community in taking the individuals responsible off the streets and decreasing the chances of this happening again. And that's all. I thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Moses Castillo. I'm coming to you as a victim advocate for Julian's family. As you heard, the gentleman speaking right prior to me, our goal here tonight is to bring attention to this case. It's an unsolved murder that occurred in your city by one of your residents. You'll hear from the mom next, her name is Patty. Patty has been your resident in this city for over 33 years, and the pain and sorrow that she's going through is unimaginable. My heart goes out to her. I'm a retired LAPD detective, in fact, we're partners here with the council member, I could call him George, and so he knows where I'm coming from. As, when I retired back in March, back in 2020, I became known as the victim advocate for our community, so I've been throughout LA County, Orange County, and there's another family I'm helping with another unsolved or another investigation in Garden Grove. But nonetheless, what I, we're asking is for you to please help, there's a, I understand there's a reward from Crime Stoppers that's undisclosed, so when there isn't a reward that's undisclosed, people don't know how, they're not gonna get motivated if they don't know what the amount is. Our hope is that you will consider the next steps in making this happen, issue a reward, get the word out, and then that hopefully will help Garden Grove PD solve this case. I do appreciate the chief and his staff, they are showing caring concern on this case, so we just want to be able to aid them in their efforts to find this individual responsible, and so therefore, please, let's do the right thing, come alongside this family, and I'm not sure if you have to put this on the agenda on the next meeting or whatever your steps are, but I do hope that you take the steps moving forward to help issue this reward, so hopefully it could generate some leads that leads to the arrest and conviction of the person responsible. Thank you, and God bless you, and we salute you for your service as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Martinez.
My name is Patricia Martinez, and I'm the mother of Julian Martinez. My son was murdered a year ago, and I'm just here to ask that you guys consider, you know, putting him some money to, for a reward, you know, so somebody can come forward. You know, I lost my son a year ago, and not only did I lose him, but, you know, it's hard to be without my son, and I just want justice for him, you know? Today was my son, tomorrow could be your son, your brother, your sibling, somebody, you know? This person is out there walking the streets like nothing, and I just ask for justice for my son. I need closure. I want closure. It's not fair that they took him from me so sensibly, you know? He didn't deserve to die this way. Nobody deserves to die the way my son died, and all I ask for you is to please consider, you know, an amount, you know, I mean, I'm not asking for, like, a whole amount, you know, just something that will, that would motivate somebody to come forward. Thank you, that's, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That's all the speaker cards that I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during oral communications that did not submit a card? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications. So, thank you all for being here. We did hear everything you say. It's oral communications is just for the audience to address council, so we'll deliberate All right, that takes us on to written communications. We have two items listed, item 3A.
Item 3A is a consideration of a written request from West Garden Grove Youth Baseball for cosponsorship of the 2024 Opening Day Parade, and Ms. Palio is here to give that report.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The West Garden Grove Youth Baseball Organization holds an annual opening day parade that includes baseball players and softball players in Garden Grove, the GGUSD School Board, and school officials, the Orange County Fire Authority, and the city council. The group is a 501(c)(3) organization that is in good standing with the IRS. Additionally, more than 50% of the participants are Garden Grove residents. The organization is requesting cosponsorship of the opening day parade that is, that is scheduled to take place on Saturday, February 24th. Cosponsorship for this event will have an impact on the city's general fund. It is estimated that the cost to provide police staff and equipment required to close city streets and possibly the rental to Showmobile Stage is approximately $6,550. If approved, these expenses will be absorbed within the current police, public works, and community services department operating budget. It is recommended that the city council consider this cosponsorship request from the West Garden Grove Youth Baseball Organization. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Questions, comments?
I'll make some comments. This, this event has been a very prolific event and long-term event, and I think it's even a legacy event. It's listed, it's not just the baseball teams out there, although they're the vast majority, but you also have the girls softball out there, you got the Cub Scouts and the scouts, the Girl Scouts, well, you know, you get a big, it's a big community parade, so I think it's one of the things that make Garden Grove special, really. So, with that being said, I'll move the item.
I'll say, yeah.
All right, we have a motion, a second, call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes. Item 3B is consideration of a written request from Little Saigon TV to extend the operating hours and make an exception to the city's noise ordinance on Friday, February 9th, 2024, at the Garden Group, at the Garden Amp, and Ms. Palio is here to give that report.
Good evening again. Staff received a written request from Little Saigon TV, who will be running the Garden Amp for Lunar New Year's Eve live broadcast on Friday, February 9th. Their request is to extend the operating hours from 10:00 PM to 12:15 AM. Additionally, this request would also require the approval to make an exception to the hours listed in the noise ordinance, establishing lower noise thresholds after 10:00 PM. The current facilities use agreement with LFA allows them to operate and rent the Garden Amp until 10:00 PM. Little Saigon TV will be hosting the live broadcast of Lunar New Year's Eve Countdown in collaboration with the Flower Street on Historic Main Street to bring a full celebration program for the first time in Garden Grove. Extending the operating hours will provide attendees, attendees the opportunity to welcome the Year of the Dragon. Approval of this request will not have a financial impact to the city. It is recommended that the city council consider this request from Little Saigon TV. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Any questions, comments? Cindy?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I still remember when I first became a council member.
I still remember when I first became a council member, I reached out to Garden Amp because I feel like council member children mentioned in term of I feel like it wasn't the UCLA. And so I was so excited, and I asked different groups to come and, you know, do event and reach out to the owner there. But anyway, I am very excited. I did want to say thanks to Little Saigon TV for bringing it there, and I cannot wait to see more event, more activity in downtown Garden Grove on Main Street. So that's it for me.
Judge.
Well, I'm gonna take that as a motion, right? And I'll second that motion. I will say, though, honestly, that Garden Amp has changed dramatically in the last couple of years. Yeah, it used to be fairly underutilized. Is that the term? I think they used it for like Shakespeare in the Park and stuff like that, but now that place is off the hook. It is not like it used to be. I mean, I see you got a lot of big name stars that want to come here now, and that place is packed almost every weekend with with modern current bands and that kind of stuff. So as far as extending the hours, yeah, what good is a New Year's party if you can't stay up till midnight, right? I mean, so 12:15, that's reasonable, you know? So, yeah, I'll make the second to your motion.
I just want to comment to jump on that as well. Garden Amp passes literally thousands of fresh new faces through every week in Garden Grove. They're absolutely bustling, and because of how well they're doing in the the deal that the city negotiated with them upfront, which includes Garden Grove Community Foundation as a pass-through for a portion of their alcohol sales, Garden Grove Community Foundation received about $75,000 last year from the Garden Amp. So they're they're not underutilized. They're very much bursting at the seams with Julian Marley, Bob Marley's son, coming back in a couple of weeks, and they've seen a lot of big names come through, so.
I heard Snoop Dogg wanted to come.
Yep. May still happen.
A quick comment. I'm totally in support of the motion. I just want to, you know, mention about the people that live around there, you know, going to 12:15, I do, we do get some complaints. So I'm hoping in the future that the Garden Amp, LFA, Community Foundation, the city, we can do something for the neighbors there, maybe a benefit concert where it's free to them, because there's a lot of condos and apartment people that live there, and they deal with this every weekend, you know? Most of us come in for the weekend and have a show and loud music till 10 o'clock every weekend. You've got people living right there. So just keep those folks in mind. Maybe we can do something for them, and I'm sure they would appreciate it. So, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we'll call to vote.
Motion, motion received, seven yes votes.
Takes us on to consent items. Oh, hold on one sec. Where'd we go? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We're going to adjourn City Council and conduct successor agency next. So we'll open successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Bradigan?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Wim Pinalosa?
Yeah, here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
All right, we already did oral communications simultaneous with council. We have consent items. It's just adoption of a resolution. Oh, we do actually have an item, so and then receiving files. We have consent items.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay. Motion a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. Yeah. That threw me off. All right, so we'll reconvene City Council. It takes us on to consent calendar next, but I'm going to start by pulling item four A and also four C separately. Would anybody like to move the balance?
Sure, move.
Second.
A motion, a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item four A is adoption of a proclamation celebrating January 13th, 2024 as Korean American Day, and I will turn it over to City Manager Lisa Kim.
Your Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may ask, Mr. John Noe with the Korean American Foundation of Orange County to come forward. The Garden Grove City Council adopted this proclamation to proclaim January 13th, 2024 as Korean American Day in Garden Grove. I would like to share a few points that are mentioned in the proclamation. January 13th, 1903 marks the day the first group of Korean immigrants came to the United States in Honolulu, Hawaii. Today, more than 1.7 million Korean Americans call the United States their home, and in Garden Grove, our Korean American community is prominent and vibrant. Garden Grove's 35-year sister-city relationship with Pyongyang, Republic of Korea, was built on mutual respect and admiration for our respective cultures. In Garden Grove, the Korean American Federation of Orange County and the Korean American Chamber of Commerce of Orange County has been integral in helping many Korean American businesses and their residents become productive and proud citizens. The city is very proud of the professional and cultural contributions made by Korean American business owners and residents in Garden Grove that have helped enrich our community cultural diversity. Now, the mayor will present the proclamation forward. Thank you.
We got this down to a science.
That'd be interesting later.
May I get a motion in a second for that item?
I'll second.
Yeah, please, Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Noe, for coming and receiving the award on behalf of the Korean American community right here in Garden Grove. I just want to chime in that as a refugee, I came through Honolulu myself. So we understand that it's very important for our country to welcome immigrants, and we have seen the Korean Americans contribute to America in general, but right here at home. And we were just there in September, our delegation to Pyongyang's sister city. So we're most proud of our Korean business district and all of the businesses as well as the residents, and we hope that you continue to remain here and contribute to our community. I am always fond of mentioning that one of our first Asian-American electives in Garden Grove was Korean-American, and we celebrate with the Asian-American festivals along with the Vietnamese community here just recently in October. So those are good trends. We're a very diverse community, and we embrace everyone and really appreciate you coming in for the the award tonight. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. Item four C I pulled because I believe Patricia Song is going to give us a report.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, and members of the City Council. I am very proud to present to you our audited annual financial statements for fiscal year 2023. The audit was completed on December 22nd, and once again, we received a clean opinion from our auditors, David Farr. A clean opinion means that after examining our records, the auditor concluded that the city's financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented. So the document in front of you is called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACFR. ACFR differs from regular financial reports in several significant ways. It contains more comprehensive information about the reporting entity, and is more structured to allow easier comparison among other cities. To qualify as an ACFR, the report must be audited by an independent auditor. It must also comply with government accounting standards. The Government Officers Association has a certification program called Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and reporting, and represents a significant accomplishment by a government in its management. In November, the city received its 38th consecutive award for 2022 ACFR. We have just submitted our 2023 ACFR for consideration of the same certificate, and we're very positive that we will be continuing receiving that award. So the bottom portion of the slide shows the city's audited net position for the past five years. Net position is the difference between assets and liability, or equity, if you will. As you can see that in the past, over the past five years, the city's net position has been steadily increasing. Speaking of financial indicators, for government agencies, fiscal health is measured by several key factors of the general fund. The general fund is primary is the primary operating fund of the city. It accounts for essential municipal services, including public safety, police and fire, public works, parks, recreation services, and so on. These services are primarily funded by tax revenues, and funding is dependent upon revenues collected during the same period of when the service is provided. To be considered fiscally healthy, a city is to have a balanced budget, a strong reserve, the ability to meet all obligations on a timely manner, actively addressing its pension obligation, and able to provide services to its constituents at expected levels. Our city is able to check off on all of these areas. The chart on the bottom right corner shows audited general fund revenues versus expenditures. In each of the past five years, our revenue had exceeded expenditure. The spike you see in 2022 was one-time fiscal relief money received from the American Rescue Plan Act, and we have programmed those funds strategically to address a few initiatives that have long-term positive impacts to our community, such as the acquisition of Central Cities Navigation Center, the Civic Center Revitalization Project, and the Public Safety Facility Project. These initiatives effectively effectively address the homelessness issue and improve the overall quality of life of our community. And that's the reason you see a sharp increase in the expenditure in 2023. Most of the additional expenditures were one-time costs, which means there is no immediate threat that we would be going into a deficit spending. Additionally, with the favorable cash position we had, we paid off one of our general fund debt early and realized cash flow savings of over 10 million. So all of these are good investments. However, I do admit that we had spikes in our outgoing cash flow recently. So what is our general fund's future look like? Are we going to maintain a structurally balanced budget? I'm hoping this graph can bring some peace of mind to us all. The green line is revenue. Estimates on revenue was made on projections provided by our revenue consultant, as well as historical trend. The red line represents expenditure. We factored in anticipated increases in recurring expenses, including debt service on the new bonds, new bonds that will be financing our police facility, the related maintenance costs, and other known increases. We estimate the revenue generated from normal operations will be sufficient to cover operating expenses over the next five years. We do recognize the gap between revenue and expenditures or surplus is diminishing year after year. Therefore, the city's leadership is focusing its efforts on enhancing revenue base and improving efficiency as we move forward. Of course, none of us have a crystal ball at the point, and the projection shows here does not factor in any unforeseen situations. So we added a couple more scenarios as to our revenue projection. The red line still represents general fund expenditure at the same level as previously shown, and the gold dotted line shows if revenue is enhanced by 3% from our original estimate, and the blue dotted line reflects a more conservative scenario, which is revenue that would be 3% below our projection. So under the more conservative case, on average, there would be a 4.2 million deficit year over year. Are we prepared for it? Well, besides reducing spending, we do have some one-time funds available to bridge the gap. There is 61 million unassigned fund balance as the close of fiscal year 23. These funds were positive operating results accumulated over previous years. Additionally, we have set aside 9 million from proceeds of property sales in the past years, and those were designated revenue reserve. Per city's reserve policy, one-time inflow of funds such as self-property are to be designated for one-time uses only, subject to City Council's approval. Last but not least, in case of an economic downturn, which is not included in the forecast, the city has set aside 26 million in a stability reserve to ensure that continuation of essential services. Again, these are one-time sources and should not be tapped into unless essential governmental functions cannot be conducted without it. So this brings to my last slide. Our goal is to achieve and maintain fiscal sustainability. With the ever-increasing cost to deliver services to our community, how do we achieve long-term financial sustainability? We invest. We invest in economic development, which in return improves our tax basis and gross revenue. We invest in infrastructure, which improves the community in every aspect and promotes overall well-being of the city, both economically and socially. We manage our resources effectively to reduce debt, and this debt is not just the borrowed money, but also pension or the unsafe condition of the city assets, the deferred maintenance. We invest in risk management. All of these are considered debt to the city if we don't address them on a timely manner. Through debt reduction, we contain costs, eliminate waste, and improve efficiency. The savings we achieve is invested back into more economic and community development, and a healthy cycle of prudent financial management is created, leading to long-term fiscal sustainability. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Any questions or comments on that?
I do have a comment, and, you know, it's something that should happen more often. Our finance team, you know, they're kind of in the back there. Nobody sees them. They're they're doing their magic in under the cover of anonymity, you know? But they really do such a fantastic job. I mean, you know, putting together these reports, keeping us honest with the money. But they're the kind of the unsung heroes of Garden Grove, you know? And this this has traditionally been the case in our city. You know, we we our our financial folks have always been top notch, going back to the bankruptcy, the county bankruptcy. Garden Grove was literally one of only a handful of cities that didn't go bankrupt in Orange County. And so, you know, they're the first to get the hatchet, and when things go wrong, but nothing ever goes wrong. Patricia and her group, they keep us, you know? We're knocking on wood, but no, we I just want to put that out there. You guys do a terrific job, and, you know, we should say it more often because you guys are back there, and we, you know, no one hardly ever sees you back there. You're out there, and you're doing a difficult job, too. So with that being said, many thanks for everything you and your team do.
Is that a motion?
Go ahead, and I'll move to approve.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Call to vote. This is four C.
Motion, motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, that concludes consent calendar. We'll move on to commission committee matters. Item five A is annual appointment to Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directions. This is an action item, and this is completely unscripted. My colleague, John O'Neill, can attest that. I didn't even talk to him about this at all, but I would just like to say, I think he's doing a wonderful job, and if he's willing to continue serving, I'd like to motion for his nominate his reappointment.
Thank you. I appreciate the nomination back, and I think it is one of the biggest agencies that that we have a seat on is Garden Grove, and it's good to have that whoever sits on that is to be on there is, you know, it takes a year, a learning curve. I'm excited because, you know, I currently serve as the Garden Grove representative, and we we have the seat of the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. We're talking about a $700 million a year budget, so I'm the Chair of that. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Authority, and I have an opportunity in a couple of weeks here to be hopefully the Chair of the Authority, representing the city of Garden Grove. So I'm proud to represent us over there. So thank you for having the faith in me and me, I appreciate it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Congratulations. John, your reappointment.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, that takes us on to matters. We don't have any items listed. We'll go around the horn. So, George, anything?
Yeah, sure. First and foremost, congratulations, Kim and David, on your newborn. And so I'm really surprised that you're here. And so I've, I'm really surprised that you're here tonight. You're a trooper in, in all regards, so, um. There was a, um, group here representing, uh, with Mrs. Martinez and, and requesting a reward be put out. Um, honestly, I'm, I'm totally in favor of that type of a thing. Uh, should the Chief of Police deem it appropriate and, and something that would be doable? Um, I'd like to see, uh, something on that if, if deemed appropriate. I, I, I don't know any of the circumstances about the case or any of the details, but, uh, I do know that a lot of times, things have to be done in secrecy, and family members don't actually know what's going on with these investigations, and there's legal reasons for that. So, um, but if the Chief of Police does deem that appropriate, I'm sure they'll bring that to us, uh, in, in rapid fashion. Um, lastly, the community cleanups for the city of Garden Grove. Uh, please don't throw your stuff in a dumpster or in behind a alley or any of this stuff. It, it's just nonsense. There's no need for that anymore. Everybody in our city has the right to have their bulky items, uh, picked up for free. You just call Republic, and they come and they take it. And you don't have to, in the, you know, two in the morning, sneak behind a, you know, an alley and dump your old couch. All right? Just call. They come and get it from you. It, it's really easy. It's, it's actually easier than dumping it illegally. You know, so, um, even if you rent an apartment, if you live in a condo, um, it doesn't matter. You get three, three a year, and, and they can pick up to ten items every time. So you can throw away your whole living room furniture and buy new or whatever, so, uh, that option is there. Please use it instead of the shady stuff. Uh, but in addition to that, the city of Garden Grove strategically puts these, uh, uh, community cleanups where you can bring it, and they'll take it from you. Uh, the first one this year is going to be at Pacifica High School on January twenty-seventh between nine and eleven AM. Uh, you can go to the city website. They've got them throughout the city, different times, different dates, so please take advantage of this. Um, we're trying to keep, uh, Garden Grove nice and clean and look good and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, that's all I have.
John?
Thank you, George. Uh, following on that, District Two is in March, so we have one in each district for the community cleanup, so no excuse not to get rid of that stuff, especially spring cleaning, right?
But you can go to any of them.
You could, yeah, if you're in the city, you can go to any one that, that we have throughout the year. Um, I wanted to, uh, bring up, um, a couple of things just real quick. The, um, uh, Georgia Lewis passed away. She was a longtime St. Columbas person, and, and, uh, I just want to kind of note that her passing, uh, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, Georgia Lewis passed away. Her and her husband were, were married for fifty-six years. They lived in Garden Grove. They moved here in fifty-five. I, I went to school with their, their son Jeff, and, um, Georgia was very involved with St. Columbas. Right away when they moved here, she got involved. They, she actually started the women, the girls' sports programs, volleyball, basketball, uh, swimming, all kinds of different things. And actually, they dedicated, uh, she started, uh, there was a trophy, so every year, I don't, I'm pretty sure they still do it. Maybe the eighth-grade, uh, top sports, uh, girl would get this trophy, and it was named after Georgia Lewis. And, um, like I said, her and her husband were here for all that time. Uh, they actually, in nineteen-seventy, Georgia kind of focused from the sports programs to the health clinic. So they have a clinic in, in St. Columbas, and, um, if you were sick or didn't feel right, you go to the clinic, and there was Mrs. Lewis. They've actually named the clinic after her. So, and, uh, she volunteered there for fifty years. Um, she survived by, uh, her, her husband. Uh, he's from, passed away. And, uh, then her, she has a daughter, Mary, Michelle, and her son Jeff, who I went to school with at St. Columbas. And then they have, she had three grandchildren, CJ, Jimmy, and Tom. So I just wanted to recognize her. She passed in November and one of the holidays, and we didn't get to mention it, but, um, may God bless her and her family and the contribution that she made to Garden Grove and especially the St. Columbas community. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Cindy?
Um, I have three quick items. So the first one, I do want to say thank to Son and Ms. Lisa, our, um, city manager, for responding to multiple requests from our residents related to homeless, parking, title fraud, building, street parking, like so many things, and, but, um, for the resident that been texting me so many times to just give us a little bit of time. Um, there are many things that not just respond to the, uh, the question, but also we need to gather some more information. So just give it a little bit of time. We will get there. Second, um, this related to the homeless issue. I know we talk about homeless many, many times, right? But this was, I was surprised with this. So right, um, before Christmas, um, I have the robotic team came over to my house to work on their robot. And so that morning, I went to buy some food at, um, Cedar Brother to cook something for them. And, um, when I were getting in line, there was a man that he had only one item. I had a bunch of items. And he could let me pass it. Oh, you know, you have only one item. Go ahead. But make a long story. Sorry. Um, next thing I know, there was some, um, emotion at the door. There was a man that, like, all the, um, store, um, employee were around him, and then just kind of stopped the person to get out the door. And I didn't know what happened, and so it turned out that that person were leaving the store with a bunch of stuff and tried to leave without paying. And so, but the store, um, employee couldn't do anything. The, the only thing they could just do is just stand in front of that person. And so I was standing there. I was so surprised, but what happened? Next thing I know, the person behind me, the one that was saying, you know, he took the opportunity to, to try to run another door. So there were several people that standing there, trying to take the opportunity. And I talked to the, um, store manager. They said that that happened to them almost daily, which is very sad. And they said that they couldn't do anything. The only thing, they just, just stopped the person, but they, you cannot, you know, touch or do anything. Then that afternoon, I went to a ballgame play to get something for the student again. And, um, there was a, a man coming in the door, looked, I guess, the store employee thought that was somebody gonna do the same thing. So they were like hurried to go to the door, try to disturb the person. It made me feel really sad because I can't believe it. You know, you hear the story is one thing. You actually witnessed that. So, um, I called our police chief, and I talked to Ms. Lisa, and I was asking Ms. Lisa that maybe we could talk to our, uh, police and say that what can we do about that? We have to come up with some kind of out-of-the-box solution or something, because I believe what we are doing is not good enough. And the business of ours worry about something like that happened in their store, and that happened regularly. And they said that this individual come to their store almost every week. So I hope that, and I did talk to Ms. Lisa a couple of times, and I hope that we're gonna do something about that, because this is not acceptable in Garden Grove City. Um, and last but not least, um, every year for Christmas, I normally buy five hundred presents to give it to the local student. And I did invite our council member here to come and give out the gift. So I did want to say thank to Councilmember George Pedigame for starting the day. We went and gave gift to the student in your district, and then after that, um, we went to, um, um, Councilmember John O'Neil, he actually have a little, um, electric car and delivering the gift. It was so, so cute, and, um, uh, we went to the school that you went.
Gilbert School?
Yeah. Yeah, and then after that, um, Councilmember Stephanie was sick that day, so we actually went to the district, I went to the school that you nominated. Yeah, yeah. So thank you so much for doing that. Um, you know, making, buying five hundred presents is one thing, but wrapping that is hard. But then remember, when we actually give the gift to the student, it's just amazing feeling, right? Some of the students said, wow, this is the only present I have, or they were so excited. So I did want to say thank you so much, um, for your support, and hopefully next year we will have more of that. That's it for me.
Wonderful. Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm gonna ramble a little bit because it's not in a particular order, but there are a few items that I'd like to speak to. First, uh, on a personal note, I just had, uh, eye surgery for my cataract, so if, uh, I'm not making eye contact with you, it's not because I'm avoiding you. I just don't see where your eyes are. So, uh, work with me while I'm in recovery. It might be a few more weeks before I get the full use of my right eye. My left eye is also on the blink, so I, I might be due for more cataract surgery soon. Uh, also, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Luna, uh, on her spectacular appearance for the new year. Uh, and, uh, Councilwoman Kim and her Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Husband, uh, Mr. Penalozza, on, uh, your bundle of joy. So I'm so happy you're back with us already, just a few days from five days to be exact.
No sleep for six more months.
So if, if she doesn't speak much today, you, you know why. Uh, I was very happy to see Ms. Mai Wright come in about the Little Saigon TV and their, uh, use of the, uh, our garden amp, amphitheater, and, uh, yes, I guess it was underutilized for a few years, but now it's back in full swing, making up for, uh, the times when it was not, uh, very busy there. But, uh, I do see a lot of activity there, get invites to a lot of events. And so congratulation on, uh, a very good run, and I, I want to see more of those events. But I also want to congratulate the Flower Street people who did a, a fantastic event last year in our city during the Dead Lunar New Year. And we had a very good crowd, and everything went off, uh, perfectly, and, um, I hope that they come back for a second year and make it a tradition in Garden Grove with also, uh, many community partners like Little Saigon TV. So I, uh, really applaud them for their efforts and, uh, bringing more events to our city, especially in Main Street, which is my district. And so, uh, I also want to give a shout out to, um, John Montanes and Janet Apilayo, who came in from the Community Service Department, and hopefully we'll get more events, uh, scheduled on our calendar, and we'll share that with, uh, uh, everyone on the GG, uh, website on our app. So if people want to know, uh, events going around town, please check with our app. And thank you for IT Department for putting it on our, our app readily available, uh, for everyone to check out the calendar of events around Garden Grove City. Uh, this is, uh, still New Year, so Happy New Year to everybody. And, uh, I want to, uh, repeat the, what's already been spoken about the Korean-American Day in Garden Grove. I think that i- is going to set the standard for a lot of other cities, too, because I'd really like to see that, uh, Korean-American Day to be, uh, something that we can celebrate every year. January thirteenth is right the same weekend as my birthday, so I, I want to give a happy birthday to myself that weekend. I celebrate it with a three-day weekend because it's also Martin Luther King's, uh, birthday, which is a national holiday. So now we have Korean-American Day on the books for January thirteenth, that, that very same weekend. So I'm gonna, I was celebrating two times over my birthday, uh, national holiday for Dr. Martin Luther King, and now Korean-American Day in Garden Grove, the very same weekend. So let's have, uh, more celebrations for that weekend. I'm all for that. And, um, so there's a couple more things, and then I'll, I'll wrap it up. Uh, the GG USD came in, and we had a good report for all of their accomplishment. Uh, and I, I would have liked the, the Directors and Trustees and Chairwoman, uh, Terry Rocco to speak, along with Lan Nguyen, Director Dean Nguyen. Uh, but I guess they were respectful of our time, so they didn't all speak. But having come here and receive our spotlight, as well as, uh, our recognition for their contributions to Garden Grove, and Garden Grove Unified School District is a very broad district, includes, uh, several different cities. But, uh, Garden Grove is one of the beneficiaries of the Garden Grove Unified School District and all of their accomplishments. So thank you for Dr. Gabriella Mafi for coming in, and I know the report came from her, and she didn't speak, but I would have liked to have them speak tonight. And hopefully, we can invite other, uh, government agencies and, uh, cities around town to come, uh, in front of our, uh, city and also speak to our residents. So, um, I was very, very big on partnerships with, uh, inner agency and, uh, partnership between the city government and businesses. So those are the kind of interactions that I'd like to see more of, and thank you for, um, the Directors and Trustees coming in tonight. One last note, I'd like to end here, and that is, uh, I want to repeat what, uh, former Pro Tem and maybe future Pro Tem or Mayor George Barrigames spoke to our Finance Department and Patricia Song and how they do all the work behind the scene that often we take credit for. So the last, uh, note I want to mention is we are gonna go into retreat, our annual retreat, coming up soon, uh, in March. And last year, we came up with the first tier, second tier priorities, which I feel we have achieved. We've met our goals. We have set the priorities for what we were going to achieve in 2023, and I'm proud to say that for the most part, we have achieved what we set out to do. And so thank you, Mayor and fellow council member. Uh, and I took credit for some of that because George said it was one of the best retreats we ever had, and I said, that's because this year you have me, so. I'm not shy about that, and I won't be shy this year's retreat either, and I will set the tone for the retreat, and we will report to you once we have our priorities set. And, uh, I suggest this year it will be budget, budget, budget. So the Finance Department will be front and center. Patricia Song will be there at our retreat. And I thank you to our consultant, Jan Perkins, who gave me a very, very good review very recently. So we're up to speed. We're ready to go. We're gonna hit 2024 on the ground, running hard. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jeff. Stephanie?
Thank you. Um, I want to start off, uh, I have two things. Uh, one is I'm very pleased to report, after going through the city selection process in November, I was appointed to the OCTA Board of Directors. Uh, I was sworn in yesterday and, uh, was, uh, serving at my first meeting. And I have very big shoes to fill, as Mayor Jones held that seat for a very long time, but I'm extremely honored to serve, and will make sure to report out to the city, uh, for future meetings. Uh, and then the other thing I wanted to make mention of, um, some time ago, I spoke to our K-9 support team, and they made me aware that there is not a police K-9 training facility in Orange County. Currently, all K-9s, um, apprehension as well as support dogs, uh, as well as their handlers have to travel to outside of the county for train, training requirements. Um, and so as all of you know, and just to bring everybody up to speed in the community, the K-9 Support Program is a collaboration between the city of Garden Grove, or I'm sorry, the city, uh, the Police Department and the Garden Grove Unified School District. Um, and so after brainstorming, uh, potential sites and, and looking into that further, um, we decided that, well, the city and the school district already have a joint use agreement at Pioneer Park. And so I'm very excited, uh, that that is a potential location and was identified, uh, for this potential pilot K-9 facility program. Uh, so I would like to, if I can, request my council colleagues in supporting, uh, staff, um, and, and having them explore the feasibility of a K-9 facility, training facility at Pioneer Park. Um, and then potentially, we could have staff come back with a rough site plan, some cost estimates, uh, funding sources, and potential partners. So I just kind of wanted to see what the temperature is. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for our K-9 Support Team, uh, and I really love the idea of having this pilot program take place in Pioneer Park.
As a joint problem park area that we've been fighting for years, I will gladly second.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And this is what, is this, uh, is this direction, or do we need to bring it back, or what do we need to do?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Motion and a second. Let's vote on bringing that one back. Sounds great to me.
Motion received. Seven yes votes to bring back K-9 training location at Pioneer Park for feasibility discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues.
Kim?
Couple things. First, business. Um, I want to one, thank Pam, our council liaison, for helping address a homeless issue that came up in my district along Cardinal. Um, and along that same note, for the hundredth time, I'm here to complain about Caltrans and the twenty-two freeway of Harbor behind the Motel. Uh, six, uh, on my way to the hospital, I saw Caltrans there, and I thought to myself, yay, they're gonna clean it up. Um, drove by not that long ago, and, uh, the encampment's still there, so Caltrans did not clean it up, and so I'm going to complain yet again. Um, the area of Harbor and Trask, um, from New Hope to Fairview is just continuing to be an increasing problem. Um, for the folks who live up against that freeway, where folks are coming in and cutting the fence and building encampments. It's a danger. It's scary. It's messy. It's a safety hazard, health hazard, and so we really, I know we've got a lot of partnerships and pilot programs going on, and we're waiting for them to come online, but, um, we, some of these are just getting a little too crazy and hectic that we need to address them sooner than later. Um, and with that note, on my way to the hospital, I would like to welcome, although she is currently in Santa Ana right now, I would like to. I would like to welcome Garden Grove's newest resident, because I do claim hers Garden Grove, Penelope Luna Penalosa, who was born on January 4th at 2:43 a.m. in the morning at six pounds and seven ounces and at 19.7 inches long. She definitely came early, and at a surprise, I actually ended up fracturing my tailbone. So I am struggling, to say the least, but I made a commitment to my community, and so I am here. And I just want to ask for everyone to give me some grace and patience. I am moving significantly slower than I thought I would be. But this is a job that is extremely important to me, and I want to continue to do that. And so I greatly appreciate all the support that I've received to ensure that I'm still able to, to do some things. And I will have to say no to a lot of things for a while. My recovery should be anywhere between six to 12 weeks long. So we shall see how it goes, but I just want to thank staff and my colleagues and everyone out in the community who has sent their well wishes, who has dropped off food, and who's really helped my husband and myself as we go through this in a way that we weren't prepared for. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
City Manager Lisa Kim?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Thank you again for all the feedback. We'll certainly follow up on the items that you have requested staff to do. And then I also want to make a quick introduction. Matt West is our interim Assistant City Manager and has come on board to help the City Manager's Office for a few months. And I wanted to take a moment and maybe have Matt introduce himself to the council and to the public.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Thank you, City Manager Kim. I wasn't prepared for this. But today is day two, and it's been full and exciting. I spent over 22 years in Tustin and had an opportunity, I was there most recently as their City Manager, had an opportunity to come here and, and work with Lisa during her recruitment. I certainly had experience in advancing up and not filling positions behind me. So having someone there to support is important. So I'm excited to get to know this community, this council, staff. But everybody has been exceptional so far, so excited to be here.
Thanks. Welcome aboard. General Counsel Omar, anything to report or any need for a closed session?
Oh, Mayor, nothing for me. Thank you.
All righty. I just want to say congratulations on the arrival of Penelope Luna Penalosa. What a beautiful name. Can't wait to meet her. All right. It is with heavy heart that tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of two very special people who contributed to making Garden Grove such an amazing city. Lorene Berlin passed away on December 11th, and Mary Sells, who passed away on December 20th of 2023. I see Canavan and Colleen Berlin in the audience. Lorene Berlin was originally from Utah and made Southern California her home with her husband in 1965. In the 1980s, Lorene started her career as a photojournalist and news reporter for several Orange County newspapers, writing thousands of articles and covering numerous community events, many of which were in Garden Grove. She immersed herself in what it meant to live in Orange County and was a very proud American. She knew and helped countless people and made a point to maintain contact with her family and friends. She loved music, playing piano in her church, and later in life, hand chimes in a group. She was known for her curiosity, generosity, and extraordinary energy for life. To quote her son, Canavan, "She was a fun, spirited, thoughtful member, friend, and community member, and she will be greatly missed by many." My condolences to Lorene's family on her passing. Also, I see Shakoya Green and the Sells family here from Thomas House. Mary Sells and her husband Bernie founded Thomas House Family Shelter in 1986 with a vision to provide safe shelter for families with children and to equip them with resources to be self-sufficient and independent. Her vision and action to help others has provided life-changing support for countless people and has inspired many to be their better angel. To quote Shakoya Green Long, CEO of Thomas House Shelter, "Mary, you are a rare gem, and I consider myself truly blessed to have crossed paths with you. Your impact on our organization and the countless families and lives you've touched will forever be remembered. Your legacy will continue to inspire as we carry on the important work that you started. My heartfelt condolences to the Sells family and all those at Thomas House Family Shelter." On a personal note, words cannot express the loss of these two very special women that showed their love and care for Garden Grove and everything they brought to our community. So thank you, guys, for being here for that moment, and with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.